All right, we'll call the bean to order. Welcome, everybody. Got a nice crowd. Look forward to a nice meeting. So with that, I'll ask Madam Clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Abraham.
Present.
Commissioner Gault.
Present.
Commissioner Kaler. Commissioner Watkins. Mayor Paxton.
Present. Commissioner Mayor Pro Tem Kaler should be here just any minute. And Commissioner Watkins has graduation at the college tonight, so he will not be here. We have today in our plan to have guest ministers and priests come up to give the invocation. Today, we have Father Ryan from Saint Thomas More Church. I'm going to ask him to come to the podium. And then after that, we have Cub Scout Pack 19 to do a flag ceremony and then do the Pledge of Allegiance. And Max is going to head that up. So Father Ryan, it's good to have you. And if we'll all stand, please.
Thank you. And let us pray. Good and gracious God, we pray for the Governor of this Commonwealth, for the members of the legislature, for judges, elected civil officials, and all others who are entrusted to guard our political welfare. May they be enabled by your powerful protection to discharge their duties with honesty and ability. We likewise commend to your unbounded mercy all citizens of the United States that we may be blessed in the knowledge and sanctified in the observance of your holy law. May we be preserved in union and that peace which the world cannot give, and after enjoying the blessings of this life, be admitted to those which are eternal. We pray to you, who are Lord and God, forever and ever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, Max, if your scout pack will come up and do the ceremony. It's yours.
Go guard. Attention. Audience, please rise. Scouts salute. Those not in uniform, please place your right hand over your heart. Go guard. Forward march. Go guard. Halt. Go guard. Cross the colors. Go guard. Place the flag of the great state of Kentucky. Please recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Go guard. Close the flag of the great of the United States of America. Go guard. Honor your colors. Go guard. Return to ranks. Audience, please be seated.
Very nice. Max, why don't you bring your Cub Scout pack up and introduce your members?
Want to introduce yourself? Go ahead.
My name is Ruth Bell.
My name is Max Snapper.
My name is Hopeen Smollett.
My name is Jason Hader.
And I'm Brett Maugh. I appreciate your attention.
Okay. Yes, sir. Thank you all very much. Good job. Mr. City Manager, any additions or deletions?
There are none.
All right. We have a couple of proclamations. The National Arson's Week has a proclamation. And I'm going to try to read this. I left my glasses at home, so bear with me. Chief Cowell, if you'll come up, we'll read this and present both of these to you. To all to whom these presents shall come, whereas the U.S. Fire Administration reports that each year, an average of 56,300 fires are started by children, resulting in 110 civilian deaths, 880 injuries, and 286 million in property damage. Whereas, the theme for 2012 National Arson Awareness Week is Prevent Youth Fire Setting. And whereas, in 2010, 40 percent of arson arrests were juveniles, with nearly 48 percent of those children under 16 years of age. And whereas, adults should set a good example by teaching young children that fire is a tool, not a toy, and by keeping matches and lighters out of reach. And whereas, in 2011, the Paducah Fire Department partnered with several local organizations to create the Juvenile Fire Setters Intervention Program of Paducah, McCracken County. And whereas, to date, 32 local juveniles have graduated from the program, which includes educational instruction and inappropriate use of fire. Now therefore, I, William F. Paxton, Mayor of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim May 6th through 12th, 2012, as Arson Awareness Week in the City of Paducah. And I urge all citizens to set good examples for our youth by safely using matches, lighters, and fire, and by always supervising young children. Signed, W.F. Paxton, Mayor of the City of Paducah. Chief, I will go ahead and read the other one and present both of these to you at the same time. We have, it's also Building Safety Month. To all to whom presents shall come, whereas Paducah's efforts to address the critical issue of safety, energy efficiency, and sustainability in buildings give citizens confidence that our structures are safe and sound. And whereas, the confidence is achieved through the devotion of building and electrical inspectors, fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, laborers, and others in the construction industry. And whereas, the international code and the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA codes, are used by most U.S. cities, including Paducah. And whereas, the international codes and the NFPA codes are modern building codes that include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters. And whereas, Building Safety Month recognizes that countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies. Now therefore, I, William F. Paxton, Mayor of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim May 2012 as Building Safety Month. Signed, W.F. Paxton, May 2012. Chief, you want to comment on either one of these?
Just briefly, Mayor, if you would. The National Arson Week is certainly, I think, the statistics that you read support where our focus needs to be with our juvenile population. And you can see the problem throughout the country with the lack of education and maybe focus in some areas. And to let you all in our community know that we're working hard to keep that rate low for us and provide the children that are identified with those problems an opportunity to get educated and correct that behavior. On the building side of it, just an opportunity to recognize the hard-working professionals and employees that we have on our staff with the services that we provide through plan review and inspection of buildings and acknowledging the fact that, you know, it takes a community focused on these items to make sure we have a safe community for citizens to visit and sleep in. And wanted to recognize our employees and our professionals in our community by honoring building awareness month.
Great. Great. Well, it's my honor to present both of these proclamations to you, Chief. Congratulations. All right, Ms. Mary. Mary Hemmon of our Convention and Tourism area. And we have a proclamation here on Travel and Tourism Week. Why don't you comment a little bit on that topic before I read this?
Okay. I will say that thank you for the proclamation this week. This is a proclamation that's being read in communities across the country this week. So thank you very much. Those figures are large because they are national figures. Just yesterday, the Kentucky Tourism Arts and Heritage Cabinet released the results of examination of the economic impact of tourism in 2011. And pleased to show that that examination of the direct expenditures by tourists, tourism-related employment and tax impacts, what they generated in Kentucky, and those figures are very impressive. Direct expenditures by tourists accounted for 7.4 billion in our state, a 3 percent increase since 2010. And in McCracken County, there was an increase of 2.7 percent, adding just a few dollars less than 300 million to Paducah's economy. Tourism expenditures increased nearly 52, 5.2 million from 2010 to 2011. And I sat back and thought about what all has happened in the last 18 months, two years, of the many awards that Paducah has been recognized for, and every one of them reflects on tourism in some way, if it be through the college, if it be through our downtown, in everything, with the Chamber of Commerce being the best chamber. All of those things ultimately give our town credibility, and people will stop here. Dozen distinctive destinations, oh my goodness, we saw people who were coming here just because we had been listed through the National Trust for Historic Preservation. The integrity of our town is well-known and well-appreciated.
And of course, even though the numbers were up in '11, we went through, we had the flood.
Yes.
And we had lots of bad weather, but we still had numbers that were up in Paducah, McCracken County.
Most definitely. We happen to be in a position of always seeming to come out ahead, no matter what's going on. I love the story of people who came to the quilt show last year for the first time and didn't realize that that wasn't the regular setup, because everyone chipped in to make sure that things happened as normally as possible. And our community does a good job of that. I did put a packet in front of you in that black folder, just with a few things for you to take home. We do have a new travel guide and a new calendar of events. This one is May through August. See the activities that are happening. Do notice on the back the stops by the American Queen and the Queen of the Mississippi. We have the first stop this Sunday. But that seems like a long way away from us from right now, because we've got the NAIA, the Independent Colleges, baseball championship opening rounds at Brook Stadium. And there also is a sheet there with the schedule. And I just included a few things in there, an article that we saw yesterday in the Internet, The Art of Attraction in Terrain.org. This is a journal of the Built and Natural Environments, twice-yearly online journal, searching for that interface, integration among the built and natural environments that might be called the soul of the place. And they do talk about Paducah and how so many communities are copying the Lower Town Artistry Relocation Program. The other is through Wall Street Journal. It's Smart Money, Retire Here, Not There. And in Kentucky, Paducah is one of the towns chosen as a good place to retire. I did hate it for my friends that in Louisville, when the underline says, "Skip Louisville." These four lesser-known towns offer the best of the Bluegrass State. Anyway, but they like the smaller communities. And then on the other side, there's one last thing. I was recently appointed by the Governor to serve on the Kentucky Humanities Council. I did put the magazine in there, so you all take a look at that. If it's something you'd like to know more about, I'd be glad to include you in that. But thank you for everything you all do to help with tourism in our community.
So we had the baseball tournament coming up with a number of schools.
Oh, we have like the three top independent schools. Let's see if I can get this, Louisiana, Shreveport, maybe, number one basketball team right now, Lindsey Wilson, Lindsey Wilson, and can't come up with a third. But we're really proud to have those. I think we'll have a fair number of scouts come into town. There'll be a little bit.
After that, University of Kentucky plays.
Yes, Murray State, yes.
And then we went from the quilt show to the Art and Music Festival.
Coming right up the following week, and it's going to be a good week.
Yeah, it's going to be a good week. And then a couple of months go by, and we have barbecue on the rivers. So there's just something going on all the time.
I loved it, and I have to say this. The Carson Center was so full of activity that week of quilt show. It started with the symphony and ended with Boys to Men. And in between, we had Merle Haggard and Young Frankenstein, and we had a little bit of everybody in there. And what was happening at Maiden Alley with the films, Bully, and the quilt films that were there. We are truly an arts community, and it didn't show any better than it did last week. But it's hard to tell someone that it really is that way all the time around here.
Well, guess how well those restaurants did with all the activity going on at the Carson Center? They had to eat somewhere before they went to that.
They did. But they were, those patrons had formals on one side from the schools with their proms and had quilters on the other side. So, yeah, it was a good week. But thank you for that proclamation.
As Mary said, these have a lot of national numbers that are pretty overwhelming. She talked about what's important, and that's the numbers that are local. So I will not read it, but I would like to present this to you, Mary, and say congratulations on a job well done.
Thank you.
We have some presentations. Go right ahead. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Gwelda Waldridge. I'm the Director of the Paducah, McCracken County Senior Citizens. This is Leslie Prestle. She's the Director of the Retired and Senior Volunteer Program, which is a grant-funded program sponsored by the Senior Center. So we're going to start out tonight with the Senior Core presentation.
Thank you. All right. Normally, I have unlimited amount of time to talk, and I wing it, but with the time constraints, I am going to go by a script, and I've found that I usually say it better when I use other people's words. So I want to start off by talking about the Senior Core. Since this is National Senior Core Week, the Senior Core is a federal program with the sole purpose of promoting senior citizens serving the community. Now, my program, the Retired and Senior Volunteer Program, is part of the Senior Core. And it's my job to be a clearinghouse for senior volunteers in the community. If anyone is age 55 and older, and they want to volunteer anywhere from one hour a month to over 40 hours a week, and we do have people who volunteer that much, we take into account their knowledge, skills, and ability, their time commitment, and a cause that they're passionate about. We swirl it all together, and then we match them with a nonprofit that meets their demands. Our mission is twofold. We provide meaningful, invigorating opportunities for older adults and helping nonprofit organizations in McCracken County reach more clients and provide more services. Our theme for this week is Making a Difference for Generations. And our seniors do this by calling other senior citizens who are shut-ins down to working with Head Start children. Today, I want to honor our 432 RSVP volunteers that have been volunteering with 62 nonprofits in McCracken County. And I want to encourage any other, some people said they were age 55 and older, to also serve their community as well. We've been in McCracken County for over 30 years, and our volunteers have used their lifetime of skills and experience to meet these community needs. We're grateful to have so many senior citizens who are stepping up to meet the increased needs our local nonprofits are experiencing with declining resources. You guys are very well aware, most of us nonprofits are doing much more with much less, and without volunteers, we couldn't do it. Our volunteers provide enormous social and economic benefit to Paducah. Not only are our volunteers helping the community, but they're helping themselves to be more active and live a healthier life through volunteerism. Seniors who volunteer have a lower mortality rate, lower rates of depression, increased energy and strength, and have fewer physical limitations. In fact, volunteering is the only productive activity proven to help prevent frailty among seniors. Our RSVP volunteers tutor and mentor children. They provide support to local disabled veterans. They assist survivors of natural disasters and provide businesses, technical support, provide businesses and technical support to local nonprofits, just to name a few of the things we do. Now, I get a lot of people who say, "Oh, I'm too old. I can't volunteer." And if any of you walked through the pavilion during Quilt Week, you saw a human being sitting in front of an emergency exit, those were my volunteers. So when I hear people say, "I can't do anything," if you can block a doorway, you can volunteer. And thanks to our volunteers, we stopped two people from trying to go out the emergency exits and potentially getting injured. So go RSVP volunteers. The RSVP recognizes that service by older Americans benefits everyone. It helps volunteers by keeping them active, healthy, and engaged, and it helps our community to have hundreds of more skilled volunteers. And it helps our nation by serving taxpayer dollars and strengthening civic participation. In McCracken County alone, our RSVP volunteers served 70,104 hours in the past year. If we estimate the value of service they gave to our nonprofits, some do work that we would categorize as minimum wage, others are doctors and lawyers and accountants, so they're going to be paid more. We average that as volunteers are doing about, on average, $17 per hour worth of work. So that means, in McCracken County, our RSVP volunteers donated $1,191,768 worth of services to keep nonprofits going. We're celebrating the commitment and contribution made by senior volunteers and recognize their critical impact on addressing tough challenges across our nation. Now, I would like to present a check to the City of Paducah for the financial value our senior volunteers made. Anybody want a check? Thank you very, very much.
So that's $1,191,768.
Don't spend it all on flights. We're very proud of our volunteers.
All right, see, Major. Make sure of our budget problems. Well, it's a good start. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're very proud of our Retired and Senior Volunteer Program at the Senior Center. Many of you know me, and you know the Senior Center is, but we find that every day when we talk to people, they'll say, "There's a Senior Center in Paducah? Where is it?" Didn't know we had that kind of thing. But what we do is seniors 60 years of age or older, no income requirement, can come to the Senior Center. We have a hot lunch program five days a week at noon. We also have health promotion, in which we instruct seniors on healthy living, healthy lifestyles. We have a workout room where there's no charge to use our bicycles, treadmills, and our weight equipment. Now, that's a savings. And it's fairly new, that room is. We also have served this year 8,000 individuals for a ride to the doctor or to the Senior Center to have lunch. That's our Senior Ride Program. So if you're a homebound senior and you do not have transportation, you call the Senior Center, and we have an association with Pats, and we can help provide that transportation for you to get to your most necessary appointments. It allows the individual to stay in their home longer and be independent. Everyone that knows about us, anyway, knows that we do serve food over there. But our biggest program is our Meals on Wheels. These are the at-home individuals, the most at-risk seniors in our community. And this last year, we've provided almost 30,000 meals to individuals that are at home, that cannot get out, that cannot prepare their own meals. And these are our seniors that are sometimes living by themselves in most cases, and the delivery driver might be the only human contact they have all day long. So it's very important that these people can still remain in their homes, be independent, because nobody wants to go to the nursing home. No offense meant. People want to live in their own homes. They want to have dignity. They want to have respect. And they want to live where they feel the most comfortable. And that's what our Meals on Wheels program provides. So besides our hot lunch program that we serve every day right there at the center, we also have our Meals on Wheels and our transportation. Now, maybe you've heard about us having parties and having good times and celebrations and travel. Well, we do all that. We play pool. We have exercise classes, yoga, zumba, line dancing, bobbering dancing. I can go on forever for what goes on over there. But we just want to know that if you're 60 and over, and you want to have a healthier life and a more active life, you should come to the Senior Center, because it's not all about the bingo. That's not what's happening over there. Thank you.
Thank you all for a wonderful presentation, and thank you for the great job you do at the senior citizens. It's a quality of life issue for the City of Paducah, and we appreciate it very much. All right. Last but not least on our presentations is Hal Sullivan with the Convention Center update. Hal, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. And first, I want to say thank you and thank you commissioners for the support, both financially and morally, you've given the Convention Center Corporation Board over the past years and certainly into the future. I want you to know that it goes highly appreciated. Phil McIntosh was scheduled to be here and give you a brief update on the board, and I was going to discuss the budget for a few minutes. Phil got called away at the last minute, so I want to give you a little bit of an update about the Convention Center Corporation Board activity as we've been going forward. We've actually increased the number of the board from 11 to 14, I believe, is the number that we now strive to keep on hand. We've recruited some new talent onto the board with new energy. Tom Paget is a retired hotel manager with over 25 to 30 years of experience in major hotel functions and management. Scott Taylor is a local CPA who will be taking my position as treasurer and helping to move the finances forward in a professional and efficient manner, working off the foundation that we've been able to put together to operate the facility and keep things moving forward. So I want, again, want to thank you for all of the support that you've given us out here. And just know that we strive to provide a venue in Paducah and McCracken County and to the region that will have a positive economic impact to the area and one that we can all be proud of. And I know that when the hotel is situated here and the combination comes together, that we will certainly have a facility that'll be the envy of the area. So again, thank you. I want to also point out, too, and comment about our partners, not just the city and the county, but also Mary and the CBB Board. Without their financial support, it would have been difficult, if not impossible, to engage our contract with the Four Rivers Carson Center folks. They provided the funding that we were able to use to hire them and move forward with actually keeping the facility. actually keeping the facility operational. If, and I know all of you did, you were able to go through and enjoy the quilt show activities that occurred down there. It was a very successful event, I believe. According to A Q S, one of the largest attendances that they had had. Things seemed to go very effectively. And I can tell you that the folks at the Carson Center, Jeff Foreman and Bill Fox, worked tirelessly down there for many, many hours, going before, during, and after that event, and really guaranteed the success and the successful use of that facility for that big event. We really want to be able to continue to have those kinds of events here, and that's why we feel it's so critical to support this facility and what it means to the community in terms of tourism out there. We spent the last six months trying to get our financial house in order and make every effort that we could possibly make to restore the community's confidence that the facility was open for business, that it was well-run, and it was being managed as efficiently as possible. Certainly with the help of the Carson folks, we've been able to really, I think, achieve that goal in short order. It hasn't been easy. We had to catch up with a lot of back bills and now are having to face issues with deferred maintenance that needs to be taken care of. So in developing the budget, it goes without saying here that this budget was developed as an absolute bare-bones kind of budget. We're not asking for anything more than it actually takes to keep the place afloat and running and in good condition and provide the kind of service that we've been used to getting. So it's, what we are asking through our budget process is from the city and the county, both to contribute $100,000 towards the budget. Eighty of that for each partner would go towards the Four Rivers Carson Center contract to continue it for another four months, another $40,000 for the building insurance, and then that divided in half, of course, between the two partners, and $40,000, again, divided in half between the two partners to address some of the maintenance issues, many of which are going to be required of us to perform by the fire marshal in order to keep the doors operational and the exit lights and everything functional the way they're supposed to be. So what we're asking for here is that consideration in the budget process. So thank you for your consideration in that regard, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have concerning our budget. We're estimating total revenues from all sources, including our partners out here somewhere in the vicinity, just a little bit over $600,000, and we budgeted almost every single penny of it in some fashion to run the organization. Very little money set aside for advertising, almost none for marketing. We're going to rely on our partnership with the C V B to try to develop that over the coming year, and hopefully that will come to fruition and help us increase the business flow a little bit, which will help the revenue picture, so.
Are there any questions for Hal in regard to the Convention Center, in regard to the budget? I will say that, I know we have Paducah's son here, but he is right. If we can attract this hotel, then that's going to just, the Convention Center will take off. And there's a lot of work being done on that. We're not there yet, but nobody wants it to happen any faster than I do. So in the meantime, Hal, you and your board are doing a great job of keeping the doors open, keeping events coming, making sure they have a successful and a wonderful experience when they're there, and we appreciate that very much. It's definitely a team effort between the city and the county and the Convention Center. We need that venue. And when you look at the number of events that our hotel corporation has talked about having on a yearly basis compared to what we're currently having today, we know how important it is to get a hotel there. So I don't know whether the commissioners have any other comments, but I just want to thank you and Phil McIntosh, your chairman, and the new board members that are willing to step up and say, "We want to help and we want to make that place work." And so, thank you very much. Any questions from any of our other commissioners? Yes?
Hal, Phil wasn't able to be here with you tonight. Will you all be getting copies of your budget to us?
Yes, actually. I've dropped off a preliminary budget with the city manager's office, and I actually have an update here that I can leave you all also at this time, so.
Thank you.
No comments mean that everybody's pleased with the job you're doing, so.
Thank you very much.
All right, we will move right on into the meeting, and we'll start with Commissioner Abraham.
I move that the readings of the minutes for April 24, 2012 meeting be waived, that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second.
Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaler?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Go to motions. Commissioner Gault?
I move that the following documents and bids be received and filed. Documents: Insurance Certificates, Pine Bluff Sand and Gravel Company, Wilton Adey, Inc. Right-of-Way Bond, A S T Environmental, Inc. Contract Between the City and AFSMI. Employees AFL-CIO, Local 1-586, effective July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2015. Copy of Quick Claim deed for 2956 Park Avenue, formerly known as the Paducah Memorial Army Reserve Center. Board of Adjustment, Oath of Office for Carol Young. McGrath Consulting, Inc., Group, Inc. Classification and Compensation Study Executive Report dated March 2012. Paducah Junior College, Inc. Financial Statements for the Year ended June 30, 2011. Bids for Surplus Property, 1110 Bell Avenue, Vicki Counts, 705 South 11th Street. Bowles Brother Construction, 233 Hayes Avenue, David Michael Dean. Bids for Fire Department Uniform Services, Bluegrass Uniforms, Wagner Clothing, Structural Firefighting Turnout Gear, Bluegrass Fire Equipment, Mid-America Fire and Safety, Fire Department Service and Supply.
Second.
All right, questions, comments? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaler?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Municipal Orders, Commissioner Kaler?
Upon the recommendation of the city manager, the Board of Commissioners of the city of Paducah order that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Okay, looks like Jeff just parks.
Seasonal.
Seasonal hires, yeah. Any question for our city manager? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaler?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Mr. Abraham?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order abolishing the F Y 2011 through 2012 pay grade schedule and amendments, and creating a new pay grade schedule for the city of Paducah employees be adopted.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Cindy?
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. You heard from Victoria McGrath on March 20. She presented her findings for her recommendations for changes to our established pay program. The initial change we're submitting for your consideration is the pay grade schedule. What this would do is completely abolish our old pay grade schedule and establish this new one. Some of the differences you would see is she's narrowed the pay ranges. We had 12 very large burgeoning pay ranges. She's effectively narrowed those. We've got more pay ranges now. She's recommended some modernizing of titles, and also she's given us a pathway to functionalize titles, which will give us, tee us up nicely for, as we improve in performance measurement and those sort of things down the road.
Okay, any questions for Cindy? Mr. City Manager, you got any comments you'd like to make on this?
Well, I just want to point out, you know, what I think to be the significance, both of the study and of the adoption and freshening up, if not modernization, of this pay classification schedule that you have before you tonight. It's really the foundation, and from it will come improvements and advancements in some of the other systems within the H R department. And Cindy has been with this project since the beginning. I think it's been an inclusive project with a lot of input from the department directors, so I'm confident that it's built to last, and as we pursue it, sort of one step at a time, I think we're pursuing something that's going to have some very good outcomes in the future.
Thank you. Good job, Cindy. I know this is a lot of work and a lot of oversight, and like Jeff said, it's going to make our city better, it's going to make our employees better, and it's a job well done. Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaler?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
You didn't think I was going to call for the vote, did you?
No, sorry.
Okay, Commissioner Gault?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary to obtain a grant in the amount of $1,000 from the Walmart Foundation Facility Level Giving Program for the Paducah Fire Department to continue funding for the Juvenile Fire Setter Intervention Program be adopted.
Second.
Okay, Chief?
Good evening again, Mayor and Commissioners. This application for this grant is in support of our juvenile fire setter program, and as the proclamation you just read demonstrates, we have lots of need, both nationally and locally, for the program to be in place, and this is an opportunity for us to solicit funding to support the program.
Okay, any questions for the chief? No match?
No match.
Right. It's a good kind of grant.
It is a good kind.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaler?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Mr. Kaler?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order approving the execution of an online grant application to obtain a 2012 Edward Byrne Memorial Grant through the U.S. Department of Justice in the amount of $16,035 to be used by the Paducah Police Department be adopted.
Second.
All right, Assistant Chief, what we got here?
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you all. This is the annual application for the JAG grant, which is equipment-only. It comes before you every year. This one is applying for three in-car camera systems, digital systems, and a few other miscellaneous pieces.
Okay.
There is no match, Mayor.
Is no match. Good. That's good, isn't it, Jeff?
That's good.
Yeah. Any questions? All right. Good job, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaler?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Okay, ordinances and adoptions, Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with the Paducah-McCracken County Convention and Visitors Bureau for specific services. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with the Paducah-McCracken County Convention and Visitors Bureau in the amount of $25,000 as a match for a state tourism grant and to be used for marketing and promoting events and venues related to the American Quilt Society Show. This contract shall expire June 30, 2012.
Second.
We participate with the state and the Visitors Bureau and the city in order to help A Q S have their annual show in Paducah. I think it would be difficult for anyone to argue that the quilt show is not a positive for Paducah-McCracken County and this entire region. And we're very appreciative of the support that the state gives us and the Visitors Bureau, and hopefully this will continue on in the foreseeable future. Any questions? Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaler?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving Addendum I concession and spray pad to the agreement with Florence and Hutchinson, Inc., for professional engineering services associated with the Noble Park Pool renovation project, and authorizing the mayor to execute Addendum I. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city of Paducah hereby approves Addendum I concession and spray pad with Florence and Hutchinson, Inc., in the amount of $44,500 for additional professional engineering services for the Noble Park Pool renovation project, increasing the total contract amount to $143,200, and authorizing the mayor to execute the approved addendum with Florence and Hutchinson, Inc.
Second.
Hey, Amy, we all know what's going on here. Any questions for Amy at this time?
Just congratulations to Amy for one thing.
Yeah.
I'm excited. It's going to be a great project.
Yeah, good, good. Keep up the good work. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaler?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Mr. Kaler?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the city of Paducah, Kentucky approving an amended and restated memorandum of understanding by and among the city of Paducah, Kentucky, and Higdon Development, Inc., and Greenway Village, LLC with respect to the residential development of vacant property within the corporate boundaries of the city of Paducah, and authorizing the execution of various documents related to such memorandum of understanding. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the city of Paducah, Kentucky to approve an amended and restated memorandum of understanding by and among the city of Paducah, Kentucky, Higdon Development, Inc., and its affiliate, Greenway Village, LLC, which outlines the term of the development of a multifamily residential development upon real property owned by the developers and generally bounded by the county park roads, Stewart-Nelson Park Road and Stewart-Nelson Park, in the city of Paducah-McCracken County, Kentucky. This ordinance approves the form of the amended and restated M O U presented to the Board of Commissioners by the city, with such changes therein as shall not be adverse to the city and may be approved by the mayor and city clerk.
Second.
All right, it's great development. I was out here this morning, walking the Greenway Trail, and they're moving right along. The apartments are being built, and it's going to be a beautiful area out there. So any questions on this? Talked about this for many, many months. If not, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaler?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Sections 126-761, signs authorized for pop zone of Chapter 126 zoning of the City of Paducah Code of Ordinances. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That Article III General Regulations, Sections 126-761, signs authorized for pop zone of Chapter 126 zoning of the City of Paducah Code of Ordinances is hereby amended to allow electronic messaging, message signs in the planned, in the planned office park zone.
Second.
Okay, any questions for Steve on this? We've talked about this many times. Steve, you got anything you want to say additional? Um, Steve, you got anything you want to say additional?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Looks like, uh, everybody is content, so with that, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Kahler?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. Good job on this, Steve. Um, Commissioner Gault?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Accepting the Bid of Bluegrass Fire Equipment for the Purchase of Fire Structural Turnout Gear for Use by the Fire Department and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract for Same." This ordinance is summarized as follows. Authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Bluegrass Fire Equipment in the amount of $16,320 for fire structural turnout gear for use by the fire department.
Second.
Okay. We all know about that. Any questions on that? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Kahler?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. Okay, Commissioner Kahler?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Accepting the Bid of Bluegrass Uniforms, Inc. for the Purchase of Uniforms for Fire Department Employees, and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract for Same." This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah accepts the bid of Bluegrass Uniforms, Inc. for the Fire Department Uniform Unit Price contained in the bid dated April 10th, 2012 for a period of two years beginning upon execution of the contract, and authorizing the mayor to execute said contract. Further, the contract may be renewable for an additional two-year term.
Second.
Okay, any questions?
I'd like to make a comment, sir.
Yes, sir.
May I approach?
Absolutely.
Um, my name's Dale Waggoner. I own Waggoner Clothing in Paducah, Kentucky. Most of you might not even recognize me if you saw me on the street, but, uh, maybe I know, uh, we've had some time. You've been in my store a few times. Um, but I wanted to touch base with you a little bit about, and ask y'all, did any of y'all get my letters this week that was sent to, to here? Sent them last week, uh, all of them, to each and every one of you with the exception of the city clerk?
I did not.
I did not.
Well, that's unfortunate, because, uh, one of the things that I pointed out in there, uh, were a couple items on money spent locally and how it comes back invested into the community. Um, I had a couple of studies that I'd done. I think I, uh, sent letters to the city manager via email. We've talked a couple of times, I think, about it. Um, but I really wished you could've, could've got those and read them. Um, I'm really kind of wondering why you didn't get them. It's been, well, probably at least a week since I sent them.
Did you send them here to City Hall or did you send them to our personal addresses?
City Hall. City Hall.
Did you have individual, sir, or one with a mass?
No, it went, each and every one was addressed to city manager, your name, Mayor Paxton, his name, and, uh-
Have you checked the mailboxes? See, I haven't been down here and-
You may have been.
Well, go ahead with your-
Well, what it, what it basically does, it, there's, there's a couple of programs here. One's called the 350 Project, and I actually got this information from the chamber here locally about how money invested locally, how many times it comes back. Um, the, the thing y'all are looking to do tonight is, and you've mentioned that you want to award this contract to Bluegrass Uniforms. Bluegrass does not operate a business inside the city limits of Paducah. My father, my mother, and myself and my wife have operated businesses inside the city limits of Paducah since 1960, 52 years, more than one business. And, uh, that's a lot of tax revenue that's been created. You know, we create money that you all use in your budget. Bluegrass offers none of that. Uh, but what I like to do, I like Candace, and I don't have a bunch of copies of this, but these are the couple of the, uh, the things that I'm talking about, the two studies that show, um, about the money that's invested locally.
Now, while, while you're doing that, uh, I'm showing here that there was a difference of $630 per person for a total on 63 people of $39,691.
That's right. And that, and that number looks like it's correct, but it's not. First of all, the, the total amount of the, the contract is, is going to be somewhere around $60,000. If you're looking at $40,000 off that, it's saying that, that Bluegrass is willing to do this for $20,000. It's not gonna happen. The, the quote that we bid had a bunch of items listed on it, and we each priced one individually. And we also had to list exceptions. If we did not bid the exact same thing. I had exceptions. I'm sure Bluegrass had exceptions. So, we're not comparing apples to apples here. No way. So, um, when you look at it like that, and if you'll take the figures that I, on the sheets that I passed around, based on the amount of money that returns to the City of Paducah, it says that, uh, according to one of those studies there, that $68 out of $100, $100 spent locally returns to the community through taxes, payroll, and other expenditures. If you take the mathematics that you did where you got that $39,000 difference, and you multiply that times 60-some employees, and take 68% of that, we're returning $41,000 back to the city. And, and you can do the math on that yourself if you'd like, but it's, uh, I looked over it several times. Also would like to mention that, uh, I think Bluegrass violated the terms of the bid contract. Um, and I can, I can tell you why I think that is. Inside the, uh, bid notice, there was, uh, it says that, uh, let me get to the right It says, "During the bid process, bidders shall not contact any employee of the owner in reference to this bid." Now, the owner would be Chief Kyle. He's the owner, according to this quote. I know for a fact, because the fireman told me so, that the, one of the representatives from Bluegrass was down there not only talking to these guys, but asking them about particular prices that I had been selling them presently, not into my quote. Obviously, I could change that. But that put me at a disadvantage. He knew where his prices needed to be. I had no idea where my prices needed to be, so I worked on my basic formulas. Another thing that we quoted was, uh, American-made, union-made products. According to this, they should be bid that way. But if you look, if you take all the list of materials that were quoted, and you, uh, if you, say you, you minus out a few pluses, a few minuses, we, we bid one item each, and that's where that figure came up with, about $600 higher. Take one or two items out of there that's not bid apples to apples, and you could be well, you know, we, we didn't have any exception. I mean, we had exceptions, but we were never contacted about them, as far as, you know, what are you bidding? Why is this different? I mean, we, we listed that, but I'm just saying, there's no way there's bid apples to apples. So, there's two things here we're looking at. You're taking the business out of the city, my tax dollars and other people's tax dollars, out of the city, giving them to Bowling Green. Now, there's two reasons to do it. Price and service. You can throw service right out the window. You're not gonna get service from Bowling Green. You can't. These guys come in my store, if you've ever been out at my store on Park Avenue, you'll see a fire truck there, a couple times, maybe three times a week, three or four guys in my store. We get up and wait on them. We have to wait on them. You're not gonna be driving to Bowling Green. You're gonna be sending a fax or an email, and those people are gonna fill an order and send it to you. If it's wrong, you send it back. That's not service. We provide service. We also provide quality, which was stipulated in the contract.
You know, I've, I've been up here 12 years as mayor and, and two years as city commissioner, and never has I, have I ever experienced anybody questioning the bid process and that we have done it any way other than completely above board.
I, I believe you were honest about, what I'm seeing is some of the numbers that have been quoted, like that $39,000. I actually had a friend of mine who contacted, but he knew this bid was gonna come off, and I said, "Well, they may be taking their business out of the city." He contacted one of the city commissioners. I'll tell you who it is if you want to know, but it's really not important. But they told him, they said, "Well, you know, from what I understand, it's gonna cost the city $40,000 more money to do business with Waggoner Clothing." That's not true. There's no way. The whole total bill is, bid is only 60-some thousand dollars. And those guys don't spend all their money at one time. I mean, there's several of them that have money in their accounts.
All right, uh, Chief, would you like to respond?
I'd be happy to, Mayor. I'm not gonna speak to Mr. Waggoner's, uh, thoughts about spending money in the community. I, I didn't, we didn't do research on that particular item. On the bid itself, uh, the, the difference in the two bids is $630. They both did have exceptions listed. They are both noted in the reviews of the two bid specifications. Uh, I spent extensive amount of time with Angie Weeks, who is our procurement specialist, so to speak, for the city to ensure that we were reviewing them properly as well as, uh, documenting properly on the differences between the two. The $630 is the difference. Mr. Waggoner is correct, they're not gonna buy it all at one time, but you have to take it kind of at face value for what the pricing is. And the, the pricing is, times $630, times the 63 or 4 people that we have, that is what that figure comes up to. And that's what the summary in which I wrote, uh, demonstrates. So, yeah, the, at the end of the day, are the amounts of each product gonna be different on what they order? Yes. But as far as the review process goes, in determining what was the best-case scenario for the department to choose, that is the process in which I use to evaluate the bid.
Okay. Uh, Mr. City Manager, you got any comments?
Just for clarification, uh, so your, uh, extension of time on the cost comparison was over one year, correct, Chief?
That is correct. Yes, that's just over, that's just over one year.
And, and history would suggest to us that the typical firefighter uses their uniform allowance, uh, for the most part, up.
Yes.
They're gonna use that during the year.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, Mayor Pro Tim Kahler, have you got any questions?
Well, I mean, um, when we looked at this last week, uh, I thought it was pretty clear-cut how much money we're going to save, but you're saying we will not save that money.
There's no way. There's no way. And I, I would, I would love to sit down and talk with you all. I, I actually stated that in those letters that you should've got. Um, and, and I want to take you back to 2009. I tried to talk to most of you all who were around then via email, and I sent letters. I, I talked to you one time out about the Plex that I'd sent emails to, directly to you all, before the Paducah Police Department business was let. I did not get one response. And, and I'm not saying that to belittle any of you, but I'm just telling you, I did not get one response. And when I spoke to, uh, you know, I spoke to you one time out of the Plex, and we talked a little bit about it, and, and you suggested a different way to, you know, avenue of contacting y'all. Now, I took your email addresses originally from the city website.
Did you, uh, lose the police bid?
Didn't lose it, didn't bid it.
Didn't bid it.
And there's reasons for that, and I would love to sit down and talk to you about those too. Uh, it, there's a lot more to this than I think what you're seeing. Um, and, uh, Steve Kyle and I, we've known each other a long time. I'm not, I'm not saying anything bad about Steve. I'm just saying that these numbers are not quite what you're seeing. They're not, you, you can take that $600 difference, and yeah, that looks like a tremendous amount of money. But if you look at the cost of doing business inside the city limits, and if you'll look at these, these facts that I'm showing you, this is not my study. These are studies that were conducted by other people.
I think the commissioners, um, and the city manager, you know, has to trust and believe in our department heads. It's their departments. They've got to run those departments the way they want to. They're, they're held accountable for the way they do it. Uh, so, uh, I haven't heard anything tonight that would, would make me, uh, wanna, uh, change the process, uh, but I will go on down. Commissioner Gault, have you got any comments?
Um, Chief Kyle, what is the total contract number?
You don't have a total contract number because you can't, we can't forecast exactly how many of each item each firefighter will purchase. So, we had to do an each, and each item, um, cost for each of the things listed in the list that you have there.
I understand, I understand that you don't have a total contract number, but their allotment is?
Oh, uh, yeah, 900 per year. And it's a rolling number.
And they typically use all of that allotment?
They do a lot of times. Now, some of them will have some, uh, you know, transfer over from year to year, depends on what their usage is of their uniform.
And there's 63 firefighters?
Yes.
So, that's where Mr. Waggoner's coming up with the $60,000 contract?
I guess.
Yeah. It is. I took the amount that's listed in here. There were so many men and two women. I multiplied that times $900, which is what they get, 4.50 every six months.
Okay.
And that comes out with $60,000. There's not $40,000 a year of loss.
Now, in addition, that Commissioner, each, as a result of the contract that we signed a year ago, they each got an additional $450 to purchase their, uh, Class A uniform.
Okay.
Per firefighter.
That part is correct, too. I agree with that.
Commissioner Abraham?
I don't have any comments.
Okay. Um, Chief, you stand by your bid?
Yes, sir.
City Manager?
I, I suppose you could use different scenarios on this thing, but it, it seems to me to be indisputable that there's a, a difference in the bid price, correct? So, it's just a question of how, what scenario you use, it'll get greater or smaller. Uh, and you're using a scenario based on the maximums, correct, Steve?
Yes.
Yeah. And so, let's say that it materializes at 50% of that, then the projected difference in cost to the city would be what annually?
I'm sorry, say, say that again. I'm not exactly following you.
Say the scen, the scenario you're using, which is the optima, optimum numbers?
Right.
Materializes at 50% of that, for whatever reason. I don't see how it could, but say it did.
Yeah.
There's still a cost savings favoring Bluegrass. Is that correct?
That is correct, based on the each item price.
And the, just so the general public understands, and, and just so I'm clear as well, Mr. Waggoner, what I remember, and again, this discussion happened last week, and I don't have all that information. I have one sheet with me that has, she, just a few numbers. But what I remember, for instance, hypothetically, it was a shirt, and it was X amount. It was, um, pants, X amount, belt, X amount.
Yes.
And both of you bid those?
Well, with exceptions. And, and that's what I'm saying.
There were exceptions.
Yeah, yeah.
Documented by both, by both vendors. Not, not a total list of exceptions, okay? So, the majority of the list was bid as it was specified. There were exceptions. Waggoner had more exceptions than Bluegrass Uniforms did.
$630 worth of exception per person?
No, the, the exceptions is not reflective of the difference in price.
Well, it could.
It could be. Yeah, sure. Well, it could be, yes.
Okay.
But not in totality.
And for those folks watching that may not understand the, the terminology here, when you say exception, what does that mean exactly?
Do you order that?
Yeah, sure.
Well, we had, but we had a list of items specified of what we wanted to see bid. And way we bid, way we set the bid process is if you're not bidding what we specified, you have to list it as an exception. Okay? So, that we can specifically look at the item that you're bidding that's different from what we are requiring.
Okay. She just gave me what I was looking for last week.
Okay.
And this is what I'm trying to get at. And these, these are public knowledge, so I'm not disclosing anything that I shouldn't be at this juncture. When I look at this, and I say, Bayside short sleeve shirt, Bluegrass is 1125, and Wagner's 1799. When I look at Bayside's, the next long sleeve tee, it's 14, and Wagner's 2099. And on average, I go down, and 90, 98, 75, 97, 99. I mean, I think that's what is confusing me. Do you understand?
I do.
And typically, what, we'll go local if there's not more than 20%. And I think when we ran, when I ran the numbers in my head, you were 20% higher. And it just becomes cost prohibitive for us to do business. Do, do you understand?
I, I understand what you're saying. I just say that you're not, you're probably not seeing the whole picture here, because you've got to factor in the cost to do a business local. We pay a tremendous amount of money. We're the only ones in here doing this. We've been doing it a long time.
Well, do we not require Bluegrass to purchase business license and those things to do city in the, I'm just asking the question, I think we do.
Guarantee you that any requirements we have will be imposed here.
They'll, they'll have to buy business, I think that says that. That's the main thing. But there won't be any employees here.
I understand that. I do understand that. And, and that's why I was saying, if it's, you know, 20% over, typically we'll go, we'll pay the extra 20%, but this was substantially more.
I understand. And, 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 uh, like I said, if you, you've got to look at, if you look at this, these statistics that are shown.
Mm-hmm.
It's not 20%. If you'll look at the amount of money that comes back into the community, there is no money coming back into the community from Bluegrass. There will be no money given to the schools by Bluegrass. There will be no money given to nonprofit organizations in our area by Bluegrass. You know, there will be no employees here by Bluegrass.
I would just suggest to the Commission, I respect what the gentleman's saying, but if you're gonna introduce that into the competitive bidding process, then we've got to rewrite our whole procurement code.
I understand.
And, uh, I don't know where that's gonna lead, but I can tell you the impact that our budget potentially is, is of a lot of concern.
I, I think from a budget standpoint, you almost can't afford not to do it locally, if, if you'll look at that. If you don't think it's gonna make an impact, wait and see if United States and Richmond Corporation closes their door, how it's gonna affect this area. Not only the city, but county, Southern Illinois, Southeast Missouri, you know.
We understand it. We understand it. We understand.
And I'm here really, like I said, to encourage you to think about this. It's not just price here. It, it sounds like it is on paper. But if you'll look, if you'll crunch those numbers that I've got, and, and it looks like, it kind of appears like you're, you're not gonna do that. I would, I wished you'd got the letter, so you'd had some time. I'm, I'm sure you're gonna find them eventually in the, uh, uh, somewhere in the mail file over here. And like I said, it's unfortunate that you didn't get them. But, uh, you know.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, everybody ready to vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. Uh, Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting an extension of time granted by the U.S. Department of Justice for the, uh, 2009 Cops Hiring Recovery Program Grant Award Number 2009 R K W X 0377. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city of Paducah hereby accepts the extension of time grant, granted by the United States Department of Justice, Office of Community Oriented Policing Services for the 2009 Cops Hiring Recovery Program Grant Award Number 2009 R K W X 0377, for the hiring of three police officers for three years. Then, uh, the new end date is December 31st, 2013.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. All right. Ordinances introductions. Commissioner Gault?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement between the city of Paducah, Kentucky, and the county of McCracken, Kentucky, for 2012 Edward Byrne Memorial Grant through the U.S. Department of Justice. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute an interlocal agreement between the city of Paducah and the county of McCracken, Kentucky, for a 2011 Edward Byrne Memorial Grant through the U.S. Department of Justice. The interlocal agreement is required to remain in partnership with our local disparate jurisdiction, even though the city of Paducah is the sole unauthorized individual allocation.
Second.
Okay. What do we got?
I have nothing further, Mayor, unless you all have questions.
This is, we're just introducing this now.
Just introducing, yeah. It's just for the JAG grant.
Okay. All right. Any questions? All right. Good. Thank you. All right. That's, uh, we go now to the city manager's report.
Next Tuesday will be a regular, uh, business meeting. We anticipate not having a meeting on election night, so we'll have business items on next week. This afternoon, uh, Chief Kyle, Assistant Chief Cherry and I, uh, hosted a, a meeting with, uh, building contractors at the Cherry Center, and, uh, provided a little overview of, uh, some of the goings-on, uh, in the inspection and code enforcement departments under the interim direction of Chief Kyle and Greg Cherry. Were able to share some information, make some comments on, on some of the, um, findings and some of the, uh, activities in place, some of the changes that, uh, are, are being made, changes that will and should and need to be made irrespective of, of how the department is structured going forward. In addition to that, we, uh, solicited, uh, feedback, uh, among other things, uh, gave the attendees, of which I think there were probably 15 or 20 in the building trades, uh, a written survey to fill out with a few questions. And then we took, uh, comments and answered questions for 20 minutes or so from the group. I, I consider it a very successful meeting in terms of the information exchange that took place. I commend Chief Kyle and, and Fire Marshal Cherry for setting that up and, and conducting it. So, uh, uh, that's, uh, one of the final activities, I think, that, uh, is gonna go into the, uh, process of, of deciding on, uh, a recommendation to you on whether or not to, uh, implement this model permanently. So, uh, expect to be before you in the next, uh, two or three weeks to discuss, um, this in, in more detail with you. But, uh, again, I consider it to be a, a good meeting today. There were some, um, misnomers out there that were, uh, corrected, and I think very much to the, um, betterment of the, um, understanding, uh, between the building community and ourselves. So, it was time well spent. I want to make a couple of comments on the budget preparation process. Briefly on the operational side, uh, one program that continues to, uh, evolve in terms of information coming into the city is animal control. And in a meeting yesterday with county officials, uh, we were apprised that, uh, the requested share of the city, uh, requested, uh, cost to the city for animal control provided by the county, that would be both, um, animal collection, if you will, but also now confinement under the county's facilities, um, uh, gear up, if you will, might increase by some 50 or 60,000 dollars over what it, uh, has been the last year or two. So, um, while it's, uh, understandable the direction that the county is, uh, needing to head, uh, given the circumstances present, that's a significant increase to a, uh, general fund, um, outlay at a time when, uh, chunks of money of that size are hard to find in the budgeting process. So, um, the options there are very limited, and, uh, we continue, I think, to have dialogue with the county, uh, on that. The county is not describing this as a long-term solution, or even necessarily a long-term posture on their part, but it's something that they're, believe they have to do to transition, uh, through, uh, what had been the, uh, relationship between the county and the main society for animal confinement. So, continue to, um, work with that and, and see where it takes us. But it does appear now that it's going to cost the city, uh, more next year than what we had anticipated. So, I wanted to share that with you on the operational side budget. I want to comment a little bit on the investment fund. Part of the budget preparation. And by the way, uh, for the audience's, uh, understanding, the investment fund is the additional half cent of payroll tax that was added a number of years ago, as I mentioned frequently, at a time that a number of cities were adding another increment of a tax to help the city do some things that perhaps it hadn't been able to do, or just sustain some things that it might not, uh, have been able to sustain without an additional revenue source. City's total, um, payroll tax is 2%. Two or two and a half, am I getting?
Two.
Two, excuse, two, 2%. So, this is 25% of that, and we take in about four and a half million dollars a year. Um, this is, this is money that is not used for general fund operations. The other percent and a half of payroll tax is, that other percent and a half, uh, being somewhere, uh, in the 14 and a half to 15 million dollar range, a half a cent in payroll tax generating about 4.5 million dollars a year. So, we prepare the general fund side of the budget in kind of two areas. One is the general fund department, street fire, all of that sort of stuff. And then the other is this half cent, uh, portion of the payroll tax that we, we fondly, uh, refer to as the investment fund. So, working on that part of the budget and, and just sort of, um, building on the brief presentation that we made on the investment fund budget preparation a week or so ago. At that time, we were, we were dealing with a, uh, projected deficit next year of somewhere around $500,000. And by deficit, I mean, that's not something we were gonna be able to adopt. That means we were gonna have to find $500,000 worth of, uh, cuts, uh, to what was being proposed at that time in order to balance this thing. In, uh, discussions with, uh, a number of parties, uh, involved with the motel recruitment and the, uh, timing of that project, we were able to, uh, make the decision that rather than budget, uh, in one year for the city site development incentives, uh, at the figure of 850,000, that we could actually split that over two fiscal years. So, while that might seem like, uh, well, why didn't you do that in the first place? It's, it's a complicated issue, and we needed to talk to a number of people and, and make a, um, pretty informed decision that we actually could do that. So, that makes, uh, a world of difference there in terms of cutting into the half a million dollars that needed to, uh, be, be found in order to balance that. So, we're a lot closer, um, than we were. Uh, one item that has, uh, come into focus a little bit since we last spoke as well, I mentioned that I thought that we needed to, um, budget some money for some additional, uh, analysis of, of the condition of city hall, looking ahead to a likely renovation project, uh, not too many years down the road. And as of today, I'm projecting that we'll, uh, need to budget perhaps $50,000, uh, for that as well. So, uh, we're a lot closer. We still, uh, have some work to do, and we're in discussions with, uh, other parties on, on some issues that could impact this as well. So, um, that's some good news there. A little bit about the investment fund again, and, and how it's spent. We take in about 4.5 million dollars a year from the half cent payroll tax that's dedicated to that. Of that, right now, about 1.2 million dollars of that annual revenue is servicing debt associated with, um, uh, projects that the city has funded through here. That's not to send a alarm signal about debt whatsoever. It's all, uh, appropriate that debt was used. Projects, uh, debt financed, including street projects, convention center projects, a, a number of things, parking lots, um, uh, what have you, that, uh, that the city, uh, financed through this fund. In, in summary totals, just to give a little idea of categorically where this four and a half million dollars goes in a typical year, and these are round figures that just happen to reflect projections for next year. Uh, one of the allowable categories is economic development. We're budgeting about two and a half million dollars a year into economic development from this half cent of our payroll tax. We're budgeting, uh, expecting to budget next year about 350,000 into community development. Uh, largely, that's Fountain Avenue, but some money also for demolition of properties around town. Uh, and finally, uh, next year, we're anticipating budgeting somewhere in the two to 2.1 million dollars for infrastructure and capital improvements. Now, uh, significantly in that category, uh, we're looking to budget 650,000 dollars of that 4.5 million dollars as the primary source of funding for the city's street maintenance program. That's in addition to state gas tax. Those two sources of funds partner, if you will, to comprise the annual amount of money that we have for street maintenance. And like all cities, we're not spending as much as we could in that area. We'd like to be able to do more, and, and maybe, uh, some years will determine we need to do more and, and would need to draw more heavily on this fund, um, for that purpose, because again, we don't control the amount that the city receives from the state and the gas tax fund, whereas we do, the city commission does have discretionary spending authority with this fund. So, uh, that's just a little bit of a, a budget, uh, preparation update.
Let me just comment that, um, when we raised the payroll tax from one and a half percent to 2%, uh, which put us right in the midpoint of cities that charge payroll tax, um, half the cities we, we looked at charged more, half the cities we looked at charged less. So, we felt like the 2% was a fair amount to, to raise that to. And then, we said, we don't want to just throw this in the, uh, regular budget, uh, let's do a investment budget, uh, and hold the city accountable for where that money goes. And as Jeff said, it went for economic development, it went for, uh, new neighborhoods and, and refurbishing neighborhoods, uh, it went for infrastructure. So, we do a, um, a quarterly report, Pam, that's in our, um, it's on our webpage, that, that, that every, every quarter, we update that, and we talk about where, where that one and a half percent goes. So, any citizen can pull up the webpage and find out where that investment fund money is going. Uh, so, we've tried to be, uh, very open about it, and, um, uh, and, and so, uh, as Jeff says, uh, it's a big part of our income. The 2% is about, uh, 15 million dollars for our, for our city income, um, and half a percent of that is, is through the investment fund. So, I just wanted to remind the, uh, citizens of Paducah, uh, how we did that and why we did that.
I might mention just one other thing, Mayor. As, again, a lot of cities that did an incremental increase in one of their, uh, taxes about that time, the city of Paducah, uh, promised property tax relief. And I believe over the period of time that, that the investment fund has been there, that our property tax levy has decreased. And had it not been for the investment fund and, and the advent of the, what is now a four and a half million dollar a year revenue stream from it, I think there's little question that that property tax rate would have had to gone up, probably fairly significantly. The city of Paducah, right now, uh, its property tax levy is on the low end comparatively across the state, and this is one of the reasons for it, clearly.
Uh, any questions for Jeff on, uh, any, any of that?
Do you want these back?
Oh, no, that's yours.
Uh, the process of the budget will continue. Um, we're making progress. I'm sure we'll, I know we'll have a balanced budget, as we do every year. I want to remind the citizens of Paducah that our, that our, uh, bond rating, uh, continues to go up, which means that, uh, the bond companies have a great deal of confidence in Paducah and the way the, the city is run, and, uh, we know that will, will continue. So, um, Jeff and, and John Perkins is doing a wonderful job, uh, on getting this budget ready. So, um, thank you, Jeff. Good, uh, good report. Uh, Commissioner comments?
I was, uh, I was out at the, uh, ballpark on last Saturday, when the minors played the Evanville Otters, and, uh, the field was just amazing. And I'm not a big baseball fan, but every time I go out there, you get, you just look around, and it's, it's just amazing what that commission does out there with that facility. And had a chance to talk to the manager of the minors, and he was talking about how the players just love coming down here playing.
Yeah.
And the great job that Doc and those guys, they do. It, it was absolutely, it was great.
Took a, um, what, a 65, 70, 75-year-old stadium, and have, have upgraded it, and it's just a, a jewel. And, uh, we want to thank Doc Heidig and, and his team for the hard work that they put in, in that stadium every single day. So, uh, Commissioner Abraham, you're right. And, and with all the events that are coming to that stadium, it's gonna be, they, they come, we're able to get that tournament because of, of how nice the stadium and the field is.
Well, they're, they're coming, and the stadium's ready, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Good. Public comments? Um, Commissioner, I don't believe we're having executive session.
Mayor, before you go, I was gonna ask Cindy Medford just to step up real quickly and speak about the Iron Mom this weekend.
Oh, yeah.
She might want to let people just know that it's coming, and the route it'll be taking, and hotel rooms are booked because of it, but it might be a good, quick opportunity to let people know if it's coming through their neighborhood.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, I would love to take the opportunity. As of a few hours ago, we had 730 registrations for the Lourdes Paducah Iron Mom. It's a half marathon that winds through Paducah. We start and finish downtown, um, at the, the flood wall. Uh, we go down Jefferson Street, uh, at a 6:30 a.m. start, uh, and then we wind through, uh, Minnick and the Pines and Fairfield. And our halfway point is Aloha Pools. Then we head over through the Greenway Trail. We introduced a lot of people to the Greenway Trail last year. We get a lot of great comments on the, on the route. Then we come back up Madison, uh, around the Circle Park, and, uh, back through the flood wall to the finish. So, with, uh, the Marriott Courtyard is our host hotel, and they report 51 rooms booked so far for the event. We've got- We've got 13 states represented from runners from all over the place. So it's pretty exciting. We have all hands on deck. All of my director partners and their departments are, are all hands on deck. We've got a lot of city employees and spouses and families participating and running and volunteering, and all over Paducah, we've got agencies involved, from the Coast Guard to the Sheriff's Office to the Kentucky State Police. It's just a great event. The DES folks are, are enormous. We added emergency shelters because of our inclement weather last year. So we're, it's looking like we're going to have some great weather.
With 730 people, and starting at 6:30 in the morning, you know a lot of people are coming to spend the night. And eat at our restaurants and buy gas, and, and so it's another great event, so.
Last year, we were able to donate $20,000 to the Family Service Society. They service families in need in, in western Kentucky. So it's for a great cause. We still take registrations through noon, and we're encouraging spectators to come out. Traffic will be a little interrupted, so plan accordingly if you need to get across town Saturday morning early.
Good. Good. Great. Great job.
I've seen the signs all, all throughout town.
They're, they're pretty cute.
They look good.
Thanks.
Got nice shirts, too.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Shirts are nice.
Now, Commissioner Gault, what, what time do you expect to run that in?
I'm just standing on the sidelines, encouraging them.
Oh, oh, okay.
You knew, you knew that.
Okay. I do, too. I'm going to be on the sidelines, maybe on my bicycle, I don't know. No executive session, so we are adjourned. Thank you all.